Welcome to a broadcast of the recent Lorraine County Commissioners General Meeting. Unless otherwise announced, meetings are held Wednesday morning at 9:30 at the Administration Building, 226 Middle Avenue, 4th floor, downtown Elyria. These are public meetings and you are invited to attend. Agendas are posted prior to the meeting at www.lorangecity.us. Click on Departments to see the Commissioners page, then click on View Agenda.
Good morning, could we stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good morning, welcome to Lorraine County Board of Commissioners Meeting, Wednesday, May 16, 2018. Commissioner Lundey?
Our inspirational word this morning, an honest answer is a true sign of friendship.
And our dog warden has our dog today, Tim?
Good morning, this is a male in cage number 20, he's about three to four years old. We have 14 other dogs in the kennel, he's available on May 22nd, so come down and see us, thank you.
He's a calm little guy, huh? He don't want to move. Who wants to take him home? Bruce Dibs kids, go ahead, who wants him?
He wants to stay.
Yeah.
Oh, look at that.
We have two appointments today, one is Pride Day and one is stepping up. Under resolutions, we have no investments appropriations.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion, Mr. Kayla.
Aye.
Mr. Lundey?
Aye.
Miskowski?
Aye.
Transfers?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion, Mr. Kayla.
Aye.
Mr. Lundey?
Aye.
Miskowski?
Aye.
Travel?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion, Mr. Kayla.
Aye.
Mr. Lundey?
Aye.
Miskowski?
Aye.
Bills?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion, Mr. Kayla.
Aye.
Mr. Lundey?
Aye.
Miskowski?
Aye.
Authorize various personnel actions as indicated on the summary sheet for employees within jurisdictional Lorraine County Commissioners.
Mr. Cordell?
Thank you, do have potential to hire, as I like to discuss with the Board at Job and Family Services, also sale of real estate and one pending legal matter. All those topics are allowed under the Sunshine Act for executive session discussions, but ask at the conclusion of our regular Board meeting today, we go into executive session, we discuss those matters at our outlet. Thank you.
Enter an agreement, a usement with Columbia Gas of Ohio to install natural gas pipelines at 9880 Murray Ridge Road, Elyria, which is the health district.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion, Mr. Kayla.
Aye.
Mr. Lundey?
Aye.
Miskowski?
Aye.
Authorize payment of $1,000 to Boyer and Cool Home for funerals, Lorraine, for Inogen veteran Gregory Bruce Stewart in Elyria, in accordance with the ORC 5901.25.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion, Mr. Kayla.
Aye.
Mr. Lundey?
Aye.
Miskowski?
Aye.
Approve change orders for additional work at the Burns Road Annex, two, Envirocon Construction for general contracting works amount of $3,309.16. Number one to Ross Builders HVAC work in amount of $1,450. Number two to Fireland Electrifying for electrical work in amount of $4,578.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion, Mr. Cordell?
911 or?
911.
Okay.
The HVAC was, we had to drain some old units, actually, we had to drain all the freon on them, so we installed new units. The older ones were in pretty good condition, so we've actually saved those, but we had to drain the freon to take them, uninstall them and move them to the warehouse, so hopefully we can repurpose those later on. The electrical work was just more power to the racks for all the new computer and some additional construction in the electrical room. Nothing really big, but we're finishing up.
Getting close?
Well, for the most part, we're done, this is all the last few connections. The computers, the computers took a little bit longer, the IT equipment took a little bit longer to come in than we anticipated because it was custom designed equipment, not so much the 911 equipment, this is the support equipment for the 911. So it's just about finished and hoping to start doing some training over there. I have to figure out, the schedules, as you know, we're always taxed when it comes to dispatchers to begin with, and now we have to figure out how to conduct training and start that process. And I hope to have a ribbon cutting sometime, late, mid-July, late July, and we may be even up operating when we do that. I had thought that we would be just doing training and then do the ribbon cutting in open house, finish the training, then maybe occupy in a few weeks, but I'm thinking now maybe we should finish the training first and then do the hoopla afterwards, but I'll bring you up a schedule as soon as we finish the ribbon cutting on the courthouse and all of that, and then we'll do 911. Once the public look around, it's really kind of cool in there with all the new equipment and the racks and nothing like our old, you're really going to appreciate all the, when it all came together, I know you saw it in the individual pieces, but you really haven't seen it all together. So if you want to go over, just let me know and we'll get over there together, we'll do a pre walk through.
We were looking at the courthouse out the window yesterday too, and we need to get in there and take a little sneak peek too.
Sorry, only the public's got to go first.
Okay.
But we've already-
If he says so, right. What would you like to go, Commissioner?
I think the, I think the judges have already gone through and walked through, and I know adult preparation's very excited, so we can do that anytime you want to.
They're shaking their head, yes.
Yeah. Well, are we looking for dispatchers still, correct? I mean, there's a lot of people in the room today that may know people that are, would like being 911 dispatchers.
Well, let's talk about that for a moment. It's not easy to clear waivers to get a job, number one, and number two, we lose 60 to 70% of all trainees. So it's, you know, it's really, it's difficult because most people leave an okay job and they're looking for a little better in their life, and they don't make it through the training, they don't make it through the, it's between six months and a year. So you, we've lost people as late as six, seven months into the process. A good portion of them just leave, they just can't keep up, and the ones that don't leave, we have to exit because they're not making, they're not making it past the rigorous requirements that we need to operate as an independent dispatcher. It's, it may appear or seem like a simple job, but it's not, and those people-
It takes a certain personality.
It does, and those people do a fine job over there. It's like, it's like anything else, you only hear about the .02% errors that are made rather than the 99.8% excellent work they do. So I'm pretty proud of them, and these new digs are going to make it a lot easier for them to do even a better job.
Good.
Thank you.
Mr. Kayla?
Aye.
Mr. Lundey?
Aye.
Miskowski?
Aye.
Job and family authorized payment of County General Fund mandated shares outline compliance with the ORC 5101.16 and OAC 5101-9631 in the amount of $974,077 for state fiscal year 19.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion, Mr. Kayla?
Aye.
Mr. Lundey?
Aye.
Miskowski?
Aye.
Amendment Resolution 17535 adopted August 16, 2017, authorizing various personnel privileges, various credit card privileges for 2018, amendment is to reflect the current stat.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion, Mr. Kayla?
Aye.
Mr. Lundey?
Aye.
Miskowski?
Aye.
Solid waste, approved 2018 community incentive grant in the amount of $10,688.96 for Columbia Township.
Keith, we want to talk about these community grants?
Sure can, sir. I think there's a press release too somewhere.
That was for paint.
That's for paint, Lori's going to do that in her report.
Okay. We have two community grants that are before you today. The one for Columbia Township is for a new metal roof on their, on their township hall, which is that old schoolhouse that they use, and the second one is for Eaton Township, and it's for the continued operation, the recycling drop off and their compost facility and vacuum room leaves this fall, so.
Wonderful, thank you.
Okay.
Good grants, and to qualify for that, the roofing has to be made out of a certain content of recycled material.
Yeah, 20% requirement, that's 35, so it exceeds.
Exceeds, wonderful.
It exceeds the requirement, all right?
You remember a while back, Petfield Township worked a lot on their township hall, it reclaimed timbers and the same kind of roofing product, they did a really spectacular job out there.
I think she was out that way yesterday, it looked beautiful.
Good job, thanks.
Thanks, Keith.
Madam Clerk?
Would you like to make a motion for that one?
So moved.
Second.
Any further discussion, Mr. Kayla?
Aye.
Mr. Lundey?
Aye.
Miskowski?
Aye.
Approve the 2018 community incentive grant in amount of $9,752.29 for Eaton Township.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion, Mr. Kayla?
Aye.
Mr. Lundey?
Aye.
Miskowski?
Aye.
Under the Engineer War Contract to Marks Construction, Inc., Valley City, in amount of $195,363.16 for Columbia West River Road 0564 coal replacement project in Columbia Township. Four bids received on April 25th, this being the most responsive, issued notice proceed on or before July 15th and complete on or before October 31st, and authorize administrator to notify the auditor to release pertaining to completion of project.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion, Mr. Kayla?
Aye.
Mr. Lundey?
Aye.
Miskowski?
Aye.
Advertise notice for Island Road Bridge 0441 replacement project, Eaton Township, notice being chronicled May 18th and 25th and open at 2 PM on June 5th, estimated cost of project is $150,000 using MVGT funds.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion, Mr. Kayla?
Aye.
Mr. Lundey?
Aye.
Miskowski?
Aye.
Advertise notice for Parsons River Surfing Project, Carlisle and LaGrange Township, notice being chronicled May 18th and 25th and open at 2:30 on June 5th, estimated cost of project is $150,000 using MVGT funds.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion, Mr. Kayla?
Aye.
Mr. Lundey?
Aye.
Miskowski?
Aye.
Under the Sheriff, enter in renewal on Amendment Number Three with Airmark Food Service to provide all inmate meals, amendment is to reflect to align the CPI pricing index and length of renewal period.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion, Mr. Kayla?
Aye.
Mr. Lundey?
Aye.
Miskowski?
Aye.
We'll go to Brandy Schnell, Pride Day, solid waste.
Hi.
Good morning, Commissioners.
Good morning.
So Pride Day is this Saturday, it's a day of cleaning up and sprucing up the county, a lot of volunteers, over 2,200 volunteers have signed up in 24 different communities across Lorraine County, along with the Lorraine County Metro Parks, which is also participating this year. We do this every year, Keep Lorraine County Beautiful is our local affiliate, and we're affiliated with Keep America Beautiful, they do and require us to do a Great American Cleanup Event every year, but ours is called the Lorraine County Pride Day. And it's always the third Saturday of May, so everyone will know when it is every single year. So the, what we do is we get in some different supplies, garbage bags, bottled water, gloves, litter pickup tools, recycling bags, and we sort all these materials out at the collection center, and the communities are required to attend a meeting to say how many volunteers they expect to have and what events they're going to be doing, and I collect all that information so that when volunteers would like to call in and find out where they can help out on Pride Day, they're able to do that. But most volunteers help from year to year, so they already know who to contact. But I will take volunteers up until the last minute, and I have been doing that, we just got a call from a single person who wanted to help out and do some volunteering, and I directed her where to go, and another person just called yesterday that wanted to get a group of his own together to go clean up a couple of roads in Elyria that he decided were just littered and needed to be cleaned up. I mean, that's amazing that we have that kind of support in this community. So I directed him where to go, he'll be able to get the supplies he needs, and so I would encourage anybody, even up until Friday at 4:29, to give me a call, and I would be happy to tell them where to go and how to get involved in the cleanup activity. So there are going to be different activities going on around the county, most communities do some sort of a litter cleanup, most of them do mulching and planting of flowers in their parks and at park entrance signs, and they're welcome to the community signs. There are a couple extra things that'll be going on, in the city of Oberlin, for example, they'll be collecting styrofoam for recycling at the Ace Hardware Store from the 9th through the 22nd, and they're also going to be doing a scrap tire collection in Oberlin where they have to fill out the same cards that we do at our collection center to make sure that they're residents and that we're getting all the information that we need.
Brandy, we're taking the styrofoam, I thought we weren't recycling-
We're not.
Oh, we're not?
We're not. The city of Oberlin has a special program, I think it's like a pilot program that they're running to try to make, to see how much they'll get, and it's in partnership with Ace Hardware. So that's the collection site, is Ace Hardware is the collection site.
And one of our new policy committee members is a councilperson in Oberlin, so.
Okay, so hopefully it goes well and we'll be able to learn from it, so we'll see how that goes. And then the other thing I wanted to share with you is that each year we do a contest in the Lorraine County Schools for students to design a shirt for Pride Day volunteers to wear, and Commissioner Kikowski and I put together, we got together and we voted, we decided, judged on this, it was very difficult, there was over 100 entries and they were all very good, and we sat looking at two of them in particular for a while, not being able to decide, but we finally made a decision, and the winner this year is Lydia Dugan, a seventh grader at South Amherst Middle School, so this is the winning t-shirts, and these were distributed to volunteers as well, so we're proud of her. And Keep Lorraine County Beautiful, I just found out yesterday, we were honored with receiving the President Circle Recognition Award from Keep America Beautiful for the 11th year in a row, so we're proud of that. Did anybody have any questions about Pride Day?
Do we have all the cab trailers going out for Pride Day?
The two large trailers will be going out, the two smaller roadside litter cleanup trailers have not been signed out, but-
Those are available for sign out also, so we actually did start the other day, the Commissioner, the Leadership and Partnership Program with WOL and Chronicle, I actually offered our service, if somebody doesn't have a truck to take them, we'll take them out to them for the Pride Day, so.
Okay.
Right, Keith?
We will, we will make it happen, Commissioner, we'll make it happen.
Customer service.
Yes, right, with a smile.
Ted has a hitch on the back of his-
Yeah, right.
I can throw it on my expedition if somebody needs it, without a doubt.
Yeah, we'll roll through there, we'll get it going. So, all right, any other questions?
No, good job.
Good job, Brandy.
Thank you.
Thank you.
The next is Stepping Up Initiative and Proclaim the Day, Stepping Up Day of Action.
Right, so I continually talk about stepping up at my meetings, when we have a meeting, I come in and I report on it, so this is going to give you a better idea what stepping up is all about. So I'm going to read the proclamation, then Melissa's going to do a PowerPoint presentation, and then we have some CIT officers that did some training, and also were nominated for CIT of the Year, and we have one of those here, and she's here today, so I'm glad you're here. So I'm going to read the proclamation, "In the matter of proclaiming May 16, 2018 as Stepping Up Day of Action to reduce the number of people with mental illness in jails. Whereas counties routinely provide treatment services to an estimated 2 million people with serious mental illnesses booked into jail each year. And whereas, Lorraine County and all counties take pride in their responsibility to protect and enhance the health, welfare, and safety of their residents in efficient and cost-effective ways. And whereas, the Lorraine County Stepping Up Initiative is a growing body of 45 community members, is actively developing countywide process improvements to lower the number of severely mentally ill in Lorraine County Jail. Through its focus of addressing the mentally ill in the criminal justice system, Lorraine County Stepping Up provides a consistent platform for active discussion, joint planning, information sharing, and education across the diverse membership. The evolution of such actions will contribute to target judicial practices for mentally ill, improve responses by trained law enforcement, shorter jail stays for mentally ill offenders, primarily incarcerated as a result of their illness, and a stronger mental health crisis system. And whereas, the National Association of Counties, the Council of State Governments, Justice Center, and the American Psychiatric Association Foundation started stepping up to encourage public, private, and nonprofit partners to reduce the number of people with mental illness in jails. And whereas, Lorraine County joined Stepping Up on the 30th of April, March 2016, to show its commitment to working on this issue locally. And whereas, Stepping Up is hosting a Day of Action on May 16th for counties to hold an event or participate in local activities to share with constituents the process they have made in addressing the prevalence of people who have mental illness in their jails, and raise public awareness and understanding of the important issue, and emphasize their commitment to create data-driven, system-level changes to policy and practice to achieve their stepping up goals. Now therefore, let it be resolved that the Lorraine County Board of Commissioners do hereby proclaim May 16, 2018 as Lorraine County Stepping Up Day of Action, and encourage all county officials, employees, and residents to participate in or host associated activities or events. Signed, Lorraine County Board of Commissioners, Ted Kayla, Matt Lundey, and Lori Kikowski." So that was kind of long, but very important. Unfortunately, people with mental illness, when they go to jail, they get worse as they stay there. This is also talks about, when we first started this, people with co-occurring addiction issues too, and those people actually get better while they're in jail because they are not able to do the drugs that they were doing that got them there in the first place. So if, Melissa, if you would come up and start your presentation, get into the nitty gritty of what stepping up is all about.
Okay, I can do that. Okay, thank you for allowing us to be here today, my name is Melissa Myers Fisher, and I'm a project specialist at the Lorraine County Sheriff's Office, and part of my role there is also to coordinate stepping up, and today I want to talk to you about what stepping up is and some of the accomplishments that we've made in the past year since we became a stepping up county. And just so you know, we actually have 437 counties across the United States that are celebrating today as the Day of Action, and so I have a PowerPoint presentation that I want to show you, that'll give you a sense of why we're here and what we're discussing, and then we'll move into our CIT award presentation, so. So today's May 16, 2018, and today is Stepping Up Day of Action, and I'll start out with a little video reel that actually stepping up started, was launched in 2015 in conjunction with a NACO conference.
The United States has 5% of the world's population, but we have 25% of the world's prison population, and in large part that's because we have essentially criminalized mental illness.
What we did was, we only moved people out of the old asylums and into the new asylums, our jails and prisons. The real indictment in our country is on us, that's where the real indictment, that we in this brilliant country of ours has not figured out a better way to treat and help those with mental illness and addiction, other than to lock them up.
Can we spend $70 million a year on our jail systems? $70 billion a year, and if you think about it, the prison system houses about 2 to 3 million inmates a year. We house over 11 million inmates who come through our county jails every year. That's the burden that's placed on local government.
And this battle won't be won in individual counties, we need a national movement to reduce these numbers and to change the way we treat people who have mental illnesses. Stepping Up provides the vehicle for counties to share information and to share our experiences with each other so that we can learn from each other's successes and also replicate strategies that have already been proven to work.
Okay, this video goes on for like another four or five minutes, but you can see the passion in some of our legislators nationally that talk about stepping up and the importance that we have for this initiative. Stepping Up has a framework behind it that was developed, and there's basically key, six key questions that we ask as leaders for our community, is our, and number one is probably one of the more important, is our leadership committed? And I will say, from the state level, we have retired Justice Stratton who's, you know, is so active in this initiative across the state, and then locally, Commissioner Kikowski, I don't think you've missed a meeting, so I just want to thank you for your commitment to that, and then actually the room is full of, we have about 47 members that maybe are not always in attendance at our monthly stepping up meetings, but, so if you're a stepping up meeting member, can you raise your hand just to give evidence of who we have here today in attendance? So we do have membership from all aspects of the criminal justice system, definitely the common pleas court and municipal court systems, as well as probation, we have community representation, we have NAMI at the table, we also have our, one of our main partners, which is Lorraine County Board of Mental Health, Dr. Kern and her staff are instrumental in allowing us to meet at their annual event center on a monthly basis and providing everyone a nice lunch also. So, so at the, at the county level, we look at some of these key questions, do we have baseline data, do we conduct timely screening and assessments? We're still digging into our data because, as you know, data is very important to help inform decisions that need to be made, and there's a lot of work going on behind the scenes, people like, what do you do at the jail? Well, a lot of what I'm doing at the jail is what we consider behind the scenes work. So there are some few unknowns yet as far as the data collection, but I'll talk about that in a minute. We did go through a sequential mapping process as a county, and that did allow us to conduct with a, what we understand as a comprehensive process analysis and inventory of services. And then have we prioritized policy, practice, and funding improvements? And as you know, funding's key for any type of initiative, and so a lot of things that are happening outside in the community with the mental health system, it may not be happening because of, necessarily because of stepping up, but stepping up, what it does, it gives a platform for a lot of conversation to tap and happen, and what the video talked about also is the sharing of information. And then do we track progress? And so one of the first things that we did is develop a dashboard that shows a lot of jail statistics to help us figure out what exactly is happening with the mental health at the jail. So ultimately, reducing the number of people with mental illnesses booked into the jail, increase connections to treatment, reduce the length of time spent in jail, and reduce recidivism. And so those four are kind of like our goals of, as part of stepping up.
Each year in the United States, 2 million people with serious mental illnesses are admitted to jails, many of whom also have drug and alcohol problems. In fact, across the nation, more individuals with mental illnesses are in jails than in psychiatric hospitals. People dealing with this problem, if you didn't agree, the current approach doesn't improve public safety, it stresses already strained budgets, and people who could be helped are suffering. Some counties and communities aren't waiting for help, they're training criminal justice professionals to identify mental illness and respond appropriately. They're designing programs that redirect individuals to treatment, and if those individuals are already in jail, connecting them to services to help break the cycle of re-arrests. The Stepping Up Initiative nurtures these efforts to create meaningful change across the nation, it unites state and local leaders, criminal justice and behavioral health professionals, and people living with mental illnesses behind a common goal to safely keep individuals with mental illnesses out of jail and on the path to recovery. Join the initiative today and learn how you can make a difference.
Definitely, there's an identified need for system-level change, and that's, that's what stepping up is about, is to help better link people to treatment and services while improving public safety in fiscally responsible and effective ways. And I wanted just to take a few minutes to look at some of our basic jail statistics, just to give you an idea. It costs $69 per day to house an inmate in the county jail. It is anticipated that this rate is higher for inmates who are severely mentally ill as they require additional staff resources, medication, and housing requirements. This is a return to jail rate, which is a rate at which an inmate returns to jail during a 12-month period, which is a little bit different from recidivism, but our return to jail rate is 19%. rate is nineteen percent. So I'd say about one in five persons have more than one jail stay. And it is also anticipated, research will suggest that this is higher for the mentally ill population. The average length of stay is thirteen days at our local jail, and then seventy-five percent of the jail population is incarcerated less than thirty days. And again, this is anticipated that this is higher for the severely mentally ill. And that kind of goes towards the churning that we experience at the county jail. Some jails will say that they turn over their, like ninety percent of their population within a three-to-four month period, so. On average, fifty percent of the inmate population does not have insurance, and another forty-seven percent reports having Medicaid coverage. And again, that speaks to connection to treatment and what's important for, particularly in our state, for Medicaid expansion. About fifty percent of inmates reporting to be homeless at the time of booking, and also those inmates report mental illness. On average, sixty-three percent are receiving psychotropic medications on a daily basis. And of the approximately seven hundred inmates booked monthly, eight percent report a psychiatric disorder, and another five percent report previous suicide attempts, and those are So some of the work that's being performed and conducted by our various committees on Stepping Up, there is a committee that's looking at permanent supportive housing, and we are actually receiving consultation through a consulting firm called Council of State Governments. Another committee is looking at designing a live binder, and that's a digital online binder that helps organize and share current information, and then they'll be doing some cross-system training. Again, data is pretty key to this initiative, and so there's several things going on at once, is looking at data. We're looking at homeless inmates and the frequency within the mental health system, some cross-analysis there. We're looking at, we have a volunteer that's working with the sheriff's office that's doing analysis right now. She should be done with that next month, that's looking at law enforcement response to psychiatric situations. We also have revised our jail intake questionnaire to include a homeless question and some other refining of some mental health questions. And then we also conducted a judge's survey and a follow-up training in partnership with Cuyahoga County. And then, as far as the developing law enforcement and community health, mental health practices, there's a lot of things going on in the mental health world, and I know Dr. Kern could probably talk for a while on everything that she has going on at the mental health board, but there is a focus on building a stronger mental health crisis continuum. And then, in the judicial world, we do have some possible discussions about a mental health specialty docket. The probate court just announced an assisted outpatient treatment, and that press release went out yesterday. And then, there's conversation about a presencing program for the SMI population, and then just a stronger data sharing between the courts and the jail. And then finally, we do have a detox, as you know, with the detox work that's going on within the county, Stepping Up is about supporting that work. Okay. Right now, I guess we'll go into our CIT award, and Holly, I don't know if Holly, if you want to say something on behalf of CIT, but we do have the trainers here for the crisis intervention team training.
I just want to appreciate everybody coming out for the CIT of the Year and all the nominations, nominees coming out as well, so I really appreciate you being here. You've been a great asset to this community, and our CIT program continues to grow and become stronger as we move forward, and I appreciate everybody's help in that endeavor.
You want to talk about how many? Five?
We received five nominations this year for CIT Officer of the Year.
You'll be on the camera, they'll see you out there.
Oh, okay. Sorry, I hate to have my back to people, so sorry about that.
Sorry about that.
So we received five nominations for the CIT Officer of the Year this year, so that was more than we actually have ever received. We've been doing the CIT Officer of the Year, this is our third year, so it's something new that we tried. So now the departments are really buying into that and are excited about that, so I'm excited as well. So we wanted to recognize all the nominees, so if I could have Cassandra Spears come up for me? Thank you so much, I appreciate it. Lieutenant Baker's also been phenomenal in our data initiative for Stepping Up as well, and I cannot thank you enough.
She's one that doesn't miss a meeting either.
William Witt, Elyria Police Department. William's also getting ready to retire, so congratulations. Donald Cantwell with the Sheriff's Department. Donald worked in the specialty unit at the county jail with the mental health inmates, and Margaret speaks very highly of you. Thank you for all your work. Thank you. And for the Officer of the Year, Bridget Novak is with the probation department. As you probably have saw in the newspaper not too long ago, Bridget has started her own initiative with actually reaching out to people that have mental health problems that are on the probation docket, and she will actually go out during well visits as well to get to know the people on her workload, and so she's been phenomenal in that, and taking on her own initiatives has been awesome. So for Bridget. Thank you very much.
Did you want everybody to come up and get a picture?
Yeah, we'd love that.
You guys all want to come up front?
If everyone that received an award could come up, please?
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Can I ask a quick question?
Sure.
Okay. Melissa, just, I just really wanted you to elaborate a little bit more on the important role that the Medicaid expansion plays with helping these individuals. Very alarmed by the messaging that I'm seeing out there this year about getting rid of the Medicaid expansion. I think it's really important for the community to hear that that's a horrible idea, and that it's playing a very important role addressing the mental health and addiction treatment.
Yeah, I will say that I was kind of surprised at the number of inmates who report not having any form of insurance, and those reporting with a high number of Medicaid, but definitely for treatment services, Medicaid is important. As you know or may not know, we cannot bill Medicaid while an inmate is incarcerated. And so, for us to be able to get them connected to Medicaid, for those individuals that are inmates that are not connected to any form of health insurance, Medicaid is a great option for them. And I don't know, you know, the mental health system can probably speak better than I on the impact of not having that as a safety net in our community and having Medicaid expansion help cover the cost of treatment for mental health and alcohol and drugs.
Bridget, did you want to say anything? I know you spoke at our Stepping Up meeting before, and you're a very good, dynamic speaker and have a lot of passion for what you do. Did you want to say anything about?
Sure.
Come on up.
I don't have anything prepared, but I think I can do it.
I know you can.
I was really flattered and surprised to be nominated for, thank you, Lieutenant Baker, CIT Officer of the Year, but I share this award with Cassie Spears and Dina Baker, my two partners in CIT outreach. And I want to thank our chief, Beth Haldrich. I want to thank my supervisors that are here today, Abby Spooner and Kristen Wysher. They all provide great leadership for me. I'm very thankful to be a Lorraine County probation officer. We're changing the way we do things, and it's working, and I'm excited to be a part of it, and I just want to thank everybody. I'm flattered and I appreciate it very much.
You want to say, you go out into the community and talk to some of these people that are struggling with mental health issues, and you go with a team, correct?
We do.
And how, tell us how that works.
We do, we go, we meet with folks who have mental illness, and we make sure that they're linked up to, you know, make sure they have their medications, their prescriptions filled. We make sure they're linked up with their doctors and their therapists. If they need to get ahold of a family member, we'll call a family member. We just try to make sure that we let them know that we're a safety net there for them and that, you know, we're there to help them. We're in the business, I think, of recreating relationships between law enforcement and people who have had negative experiences due to their mental illness. So we're trying to establish new relationships and new ways of dealing with people, and I am very happy to say it's working, so.
It used to be they saw you and they thought they were in trouble, now they see you and they know that you care about them.
Yeah, they welcome us into their homes now. Their families are happy to see us, they're happy to see us, and we're proud of that.
Yep, and I'm proud of you guys because you do a great job.
Thank you very much.
Judge Cook, any comments in regards, I see you're joining us this morning?
You have to come up here, though. See, Commissioner Kallo put you on the spot.
You've got to recognize the judge, I mean, he came, so.
Thank you, I'll be very brief. This award is well-earned, I have been involved in Stepping Up for the Common Police Court since it started, and it's an amazing program administered by amazing people. And the Common Police Court is doing everything it can to support this initiative. We are seriously looking at a mental health court docket, which would be similar to the Veterans Court and the Recovery Court dockets, to assist those with serious mental health illness when they're actually in the common police system. And we're partnering with the municipal courts so that we can have one mental health court for the whole county that will deal with all individuals in the court system. Judge Jim Ralke and I are sort of spearheading that, and I hope we have something positive to report that is concurrent with Stepping Up, and hopefully we'll have some information shortly for you. But congratulations to the recipients, Bridget, amazing, all of the folks here do a great job, and thank you very much.
Judge Bill Encini from Avon, Avon Lake, he also comes to our Stepping Up meetings, and he's been very active, so. This is a great group of people trying to make a difference in the mental health community, so thank you all.
You know, Commissioner, there's about twenty-five thousand prisoners that are released into Ohio, maybe twenty-six thousand every year into the communities, and about fifty-five percent of them are back in prison in three years because there's not enough supports and enough, enough resources out there. And it costs thirty thousand dollars a year to house a prisoner at the state level, give or take a few dollars.
What did you say about the, being able to put them all in college for a year or something?
Well, once years ago, we were spending so much on our jail, and I shouldn't say so much, it cost to operate. So I don't want to be, they do a great job out there, so I don't want to be damaging to that. But if we put all that money into education, they can all have free tuition for college. That's, and we, our costs are substantially lower here than at the state, but the state's spending thirty thousand dollars on a prisoner, but yet the resource they provide to us for re-entry programs and services to help folks regain their footing is not very much at all.
Abysmal at best.
Well, I was going to, trying to be a little nicer, but they will pay thirty thousand to house them in a prison, but how much they give us to help here locally with them?
The only good thing-
It's not a good balance of the dollars.
The only good news I saw here today, I questioned Melissa on that when she said it's sixty-nine dollars a day to house a prisoner at our jail. It used to be like eighty to ninety dollars a day, so the cost of that's gone down. Either that or we just have a lot more inmates that is driving the cost down, so I don't know, but sixty-nine dollars is still a lot of money. Thank you all for attending, appreciate what you do.
Madam Clerk?
Mr. Renes.
Good to see you back, Melissa. It's been a while, I hope everything's going well with the sheriff for you. We've had a busy morning, I'll yield the counsel and just remind you of the executive session issues I'd like to discuss. Thank you.
Mr. Renes.
I have another bevy. I have four matters pending or imminent litigation for discussion in executive session.
I know, bevy means a lot.
Just another week at the office, right?
Mr. Renes.
Well, Thursday, I attended my Stepping Up meeting, now you all know what I do there when I, when I go. So, and then Friday, I attended the Opiate Action Team meeting, and yesterday, the state of this village, Sheffield Village, the heart of Lorraine County, Mayor Hunter had over at Quaker State early yesterday morning, so he knows his village inside and out and does a great job. And then, we did put out a press release today for Keep Ohio Beautiful Award. The Salways Management District and the commissioners are pleased to announce that Main Street has been awarded a paint grant from Keep Ohio Beautiful. Each year, Keep Ohio Beautiful partners with Sherwin-Williams, and the grant provides community groups with paint and painting supplies to transform buildings in need of repair. So there'll be volunteers will get painting supplies, up to forty gallons of paint to restore the exterior of the old Cheese Building in Wellington, and it's great to see the pride in their community. And if you have any questions or want to contact anybody in the Salways Management District, you can call three-two-nine-five-four-four-two.
I was going to say, paint's not cheap anymore, paint's expensive.
It is very expensive, but. End of my report.
Okay, great. Yeah, busy week. On Thursday evening, I attended Lorraine Historical Society Annual Dinner, packed house at DeLuca's, and Dick Desage was the speaker from Equity Trust, he had kind words to say about the Board of Commissioners, always reappointing him to the Board of the College and the importance of education and working hard. Dick did a great job, and again, congratulations to the Board at the Historical Society. Friday morning, busy, had three meetings at Nowaka that day. We started off at eight-thirty in the morning with our audit with the State of Ohio Auditors. We had a clean audit, a couple suggestions, but we're such small staff, some double-checking, but on that, we had a clean audit. We also discussed in our governance committee, the new Nowaka dues discussion, there hasn't been an increase in dues in eleven years, so we're talking about an increase in dues to get some things done. And then, of course, we had our executive board moving everything to the Board for next month's general Board meeting for approval. Also, we kicked off our Leadership and Partnership Program with WOLs, I explained earlier. So we'll be out in the community and recording, discussing things happening in the county. People don't always know what the Board of Commissioners do. First talk was about Pride Day and the Keep America Beautiful trailers that are available for the community. And then, again, congratulations to Mayor Hunter, his Sheffield Village Business meeting went off great, a lot of attendance, people interested.
Live streaming it, did you know?
No, I didn't know that.
Yeah, they were live streaming, the Journal, I think, did.
Oh, did they? That's why Daryl was sitting up front?
Yeah.
Okay, all right then. End of my report.
Just want to send out a congratulations, Lorraine County Chamber, they held their Economic Summit on Friday, wasn't able to attend, but I understand it was a very informative and a great event. Also, congratulations, Avon Lake Garden Club on their Mother's Day plant sale. And once again, Happy Mother's Day to all the mothers. Can't think of a tougher job than being a mom, so. Once a mom, always a mom, right? And also, congratulations, Mayor Hunter, Sheffield Village, on the Business Council Breakfast, always very informative and very well-attended, and that completes my report.
Next Wednesday at eight-thirty, we'll have our Transportation Improvement District meeting, Board Correspondents.
Will the reading be waived?
Second.
Discussion, Mr. Kallo.
Aye.
Mr. Lundey.
Aye.
Ms. Kokowski. Aye. Public comment?
Anyone wishing to address the Board this morning?
No.
Seeing none, I'll make a motion, move an executive session as outlined by the county administrator and the bevy of litigation with the assistant county prosecutor.
Yeah, I think I want to second that motion, yes.
Mr. Kallo.
Aye.
Mr. Lundey.
Aye.
Ms. Kokowski. Aye.
Thank you, everyone.
This has been a broadcast of the recent Lorraine County Commissioners' General Meeting. Unless otherwise announced, meetings are held Wednesday morning at the Administration Building, two-twenty-six Middle Avenue, fourth floor downtown Elyria. These are public meetings, and you are invited to attend. Agendas are posted prior to the meeting at www.lorainecounty.us. Click on Departments to see the Commissioners' page, and click on View Agenda for a printable copy of the agenda. Unless otherwise announced, meetings are held Wednesday morning at the Administration Building, 226 Middle Avenue, 4th Floor Downtown Alaria. These are public meetings and you are invited to attend. Agendas are posted prior to the meeting at www.loraincounty.us. Click on Departments to see the Commissioners' page, then click on View Agenda for a printable copy of the agenda. Welcome to a broadcast of the recent Lorain County Commissioners' General Meeting. Unless otherwise announced, meetings are held Wednesday morning at 9:30 at the Administration Building, 226 Middle Avenue, 4th Floor Downtown Alaria. These are public meetings and you are invited to attend. Agendas are posted prior to the meeting at www.loraincounty.us. Click on Departments to see the Commissioners' page, then click on View Agenda.
Morning. Could we stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good morning. Welcome to Lorain County Board of Commissioners' Meeting, Wednesday, May 16, 2018. Commissioner Lundey?
Our inspirational word this morning, "An honest answer is a true sign of friendship."
And our dog warden has our dog today. Tim?
Good morning. This is a male in cage number 20. He's about three to four years old. We have 14 other dogs in the kennel. He's available on May 22nd. So, come down and see us. Thank you.
He's a calm little guy, huh?
Yeah.
He don't want to move. Who wants to take him home? Bruce Dibbs kids, go ahead. Who wants him?
He wants to stay.
Yeah.
Oh, look at that.
Madam Clerk?
We have two appointments today. One is Pride Day and one is stepping up. Under resolutions, we have no investments appropriations.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Mr. Kayla.
Aye.
Mr. Lundey.
Aye.
Miss Kowski.
Aye.
Transfers?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Mr. Kayla.
Aye.
Mr. Lundey.
Aye.
Miss Kowski.
Aye.
No advances, no repayments, requisitions?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Mr. Kayla.
Aye.
Mr. Lundey.
Aye.
Miss Kowski.
Aye.
Travel?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Mr. Kayla.
Aye.
Mr. Lundey.
Aye.
Miss Kowski.
Aye.
Bills?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Mr. Kayla.
Aye.
Mr. Lundey.
Aye.
Miss Kowski.
Aye.
Authorized various personnel actions as indicated on the summary sheet for employees within jurisdiction of the County Commissioners?
Mr. Cordell?
Thank you. Do have potential to hire. As I like to discuss with the Board at Job Family Services. Also, sale of real estate and one pending legal matter. All of those topics are allowed under the Sunshine Act for executive session discussions. I'd ask at the conclusion of our regular Board Meeting today, we go into executive session, we discuss those matters that are out there. Thank you.
Enter an agreement of usement with Columbia Gas of Ohio to install natural gas pipelines at 9880 Murray Ridge Road, Alaria, which is the health district.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Mr. Kayla.
Aye.
Mr. Lundey.
Aye.
Miss Kowski.
Aye.
Authorized payment of $1,000 to Boyer and Cool Home for funerals, Lorain, for Inogen veteran Gregory Bruce Stewart in Alaria, in accordance with the ORC 5901.25.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Mr. Kayla.
Aye.
Mr. Lundey.
Aye.
Miss Kowski.
Aye.
Approved change orders for additional work at the Burns Road Annex. Two, Envirocon construction for general contracting work in the amount of $3,309.16. Number one to Ross Builders HVAC work in the amount of $1,450. Number two to Fireland Electric for electrical work in the amount of $4,578.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion.
Mr. Cordell, 911 or?
911. The HVAC was, we had to drain some old units, actually. We had to drain all the freon on them, so we installed new units. The older ones were in pretty good condition, so we've actually saved those. But we had to drain the freon to take them, take, uninstall them and move them to the warehouse, so hopefully, we can repurpose those later on. The electrical work was just more power to the racks for all the new computer and some additional construction in the electrical room. Nothing really big, but we're finishing up.
Getting close?
Well, for the, for the most part, we're done. This is all the last few connections. The computers, the computers took a little bit longer. The IT equipment took a little bit longer to come in than we anticipated because it was custom designed equipment. Not so much the 911 equipment. This is the support equipment for the 911. So, it's just about finished and hoping to start doing some training over there. I have to figure out, the schedules, as you know, we're, we're always taxed when it comes to dispatchers to begin with. And now, we have to figure out how to conduct training and start that process. And I hope to have a ribbon cutting sometime late, mid-Ju, mid-July, late July. And we may be even up operating when we do that. I had thought that we would be just doing training and then do the ribbon cutting in open house, finish the training, then maybe occupy in a few weeks. But I'm thinking now, maybe we should finish the training first and then do the hoopla afterwards. But I'll, I'll bring you up the schedule as soon as we finish the ribbon cutting on the courthouse and all of that, and then we'll do 911. Once the public look around, it's really kind of cool in there with all the new equipment and the racks and nothing like our old. You're, you're really going to appreciate all the, when it all came together. Know you saw it in the individual pieces, but you really haven't seen it all together. So, if you want to go over, just let me know and we'll get over there together. We'll, we'll do a pre walk through.
We were looking at the courthouse out the window yesterday, too, and we're like, we need to get in there and take a little sneak peek, too.
Sorry, only the public's got to go first. Okay, but we've already-
If he says so, right? What would you like to go, Commissioner?
I think, I think the, I think the judges have already gone through and walked through and I know the dope operation's very excited, so we can do that anytime you want to.
They're shaking their head, yes.
Well, are we looking for dispatchers still, correct? I mean, there's a lot of people in the room today that may know people that are, would like to be 911 dispatchers.
Well, let's talk about that for a moment. It's not easy to clear waivers, to get a job, number one, and number two, we lose 60 to 70% of all trainees. So, it's, you know, it's really, it's difficult because most people leave an okay job and they're looking for a little better in their life. They don't make it through the training. They don't make it through the, it's, it's between six months and a year. So, you, we've, we've lost people as late as six, seven months into the process. A good, a good portion of them just leave. They just can't keep up. And the ones that don't leave, we have to exit because they're not making, they're not making it past the rigorous requirements that we need to operate as an independent dispatcher. It's, it may appear or seem like a simple job, but it's not. And those people-
It takes a certain personality.
It does. Those people do a fine job over there. It was like, it's like anything else. You only hear about the .02% errors that are made rather than the 99.8% excellent work they do. So, I'm pretty proud of them and these new digs are going to make it a lot easier for them to do even a better job.
Thank you.
Mr. Kayla.
Aye.
Mr. Lundey.
Aye.
Miss Kowski.
Aye.
Job and family authorized payment of county general fund mandated shares outlined in compliance with the ORC 5101.16 and OAC 5101-9631 in the amount of $974,077 for state fiscal year 19.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Mr. Kayla.
Aye.
Mr. Lundey.
Aye.
Miss Kowski.
Aye.
Amendment Resolution 17535 adopted August 16, 2017, authorizing various personnel, legalized various credit card privileges for 2018. Amendment is to reflect the current stat.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Mr. Kayla.
Aye.
Mr. Lundey.
Aye.
Miss Kowski.
Aye.
Solid Waste approved the 2018 community incentive grant in the amount of $10,688.96 for Columbia Township.
Keith, we want to talk about these community grants?
Sure can, sir. I think there's a press release, too, somewhere.
That was for paint.
That's for paint. Lori's going to do that in her report.
Okay. We have two community grants that are before you today. The one for Columbia Township is for a new metal roof on their, on their township hall, which is that old schoolhouse that they use. And the second one is for Eaton Township and it's for the continued operation of the recycling drop-off and their compost facility. And vacuum room leaves is fall, so.
Wonderful. Thank you.
Okay.
Good grants. And to qualify for that, the roofing has to be made out of a certain content of recycled material.
20% is a requirement. It's 35, so it exceeds.
Exceeds, wonderful.
It exceeds a requirement, all right?
You remember a while back, Pittfield Township worked a lot on their township hall. It reclaimed timbers and, and the same kind of roofing product. They did a really spectacular job out there.
I think she was out that way yesterday. Beautiful.
Good job. Thanks.
Thanks, Keith. Madam Clerk?
Would you like to make a motion for that one?
So moved.
Second.
Any further discussion? Mr. Kayla.
Aye.
Mr. Lundey.
Aye.
Miss Kowski.
Aye.
Approved the 2018 community incentive grant in the amount of $9,752.29 for Eaton Township.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Mr. Kayla.
Aye.
Mr. Lundey.
Aye.
Miss Kowski.
Aye.
Under the Engineer War Contract and Marks Construction, Inc., Valley City, in the amount of $195,363.16 for Columbia West River Road 0564 Coal Replacement Project in Columbia Township. Four bids received on April 25th, this being the most responsive. Issue notice proceed on or before July 15th and complete on or before October 31st and authorize Administrator to notify the Auditor to release pertaining to completion of project.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Mr. Kayla.
Aye.
Mr. Lundey.
Aye.
Miss Kowski.
Aye.
Advertised notice for Island Road Bridge 0441 Replacement Project, Eaton Township. Notice being the Chronicle May 18th and 25th and open at 2:00 PM on June 5th. Estimated cost of project is $150,000 using MVGT funds.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Mr. Kayla.
Aye.
Mr. Lundey.
Aye.
Miss Kowski.
Aye.
Advertised notice for Parsons River Servicing Project, Carlisle and LaGrange Township. Notice being the Chronicle May 18th and 25th and open at 2:30 on June 5th. Estimated cost of project is $150,000 using MVGT funds.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Mr. Kayla.
Aye.
Mr. Lundey.
Aye.
Miss Kowski.
Aye.
Under the Sheriff, Enter an Renewal Amendment Number Three with Airmark Food Service to provide all inmate meals. Amendment is to reflect to align the CPI pricing index and length of renewal period.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Mr. Kayla.
Aye.
Mr. Lundey.
Aye.
Miss Kowski.
Aye.
We'll go to Brandy Schnell, Pride Day, Solid Waste.
Hi.
Good morning, Commissioners.
Morning.
So, Pride Day is this Saturday. It's a day of cleaning up and sprucing up the county. A lot of volunteers, over 2,200 volunteers have signed up in 24 different communities across Lorain County, along with the Lorain County Metro Parks, which is also participating this year. We do this every year. Keep Lorain County Beautiful is our local affiliate and we're affiliated with Keep America Beautiful. They do and require us to do a Great American Cleanup Event every year, but ours is called the Lorain County Pride Day. And it's always the third Saturday of May, so everyone will know when it is every single year. So, the, what we do is we get in some different supplies, garbage bags, bottled water, gloves, litter pickup tools, recycling bags. And we sort all these materials out at the collection center and the communities are required to attend a meeting to say how many volunteers they expect to have and what events they're going to be doing. And I collect all that information so that when volunteers would like to call in and find out where they can help out on Pride Day, they're able to do that. But most volunteers help from year to year, so they already know who to contact. But I will take volunteers up until the last minute and I have been doing that. We just got a call from a single person who wanted to help out and do some volunteering and I directed her where to go. And another person just called yesterday that wanted to get a group of his own together to go clean up a couple of roads in Alaria that he decided were just littered and needed to be cleaned up. I mean, that's amazing that we have that kind of support in this community. So, I directed him where to go. He'll be able to get the supplies he needs and so, I would encourage anybody, even up until Friday at 4:29 to give me a call and I would be happy to tell them where to go and how to get involved in the cleanup activity. So, there are going to be different activities going on around the county. Most communities do some sort of a litter cleanup. Most of them do mulching and planting of flowers in their parks and at park entrance signs and they're welcome to the community signs. There are a couple extra things that'll be going on. In the city of Oberlin, for example, they'll be collecting styrofoam for recycling at the Ace Hardware Store from the 9th through the 22nd. And they're also going to be doing a scrap tire collection in Oberlin where they have to fill out the same cards that we do at our collection center to make sure that they're residents and that we're getting all the information that we need.
Brandy, we're taking the styrofoam. I thought we weren't recycling-
We're not.
Oh, we're not?
We're not. The city of Oberlin has a special program, I think it's like a pilot program, that they're running to try to make, to see how much they'll get and it's in partnership with Ace Hardware. So, that's the collection site, is Ace Hardware is the collection site.
And one of our new policy committee members is a councilperson in Oberlin, so.
Okay, so hopefully, it goes well and we'll be able to learn from it. So, we'll see how that goes. And then, the other thing I wanted to share with you is that each year, we do a contest in the Lorain County Schools for students to design a shirt for Pride Day volunteers to wear. And Commissioner Kukowski and I put together, we, we got together and we voted, we, we decided, judged on this. It was very difficult. There was over 100 entries and they were all very good and we sat looking at two of them in particular for a while, not being able to decide. But we finally made a decision and the winner this year is Lydia Dugan, a seventh grader at South Amherst Middle School. So, this is the winning t-shirts and these were distributed to volunteers as well. So, we're, we're proud of her. And Keep Lorain County Beautiful, I just found out yesterday, we were honored with receiving the President Circle Recognition Award from Keep America Beautiful for the 11th year in a row, so we're proud of that. Did anybody have any questions about Pride Day?
Do we have all the cab trailers going out for Pride Day?
The two large trailers will be going out. The two smaller roadside litter cleanup trailers have not been signed out, but they're still-
Those are available for sign out also, so.
They are available.
We actually did start the other day, the Commissioner, the Leadership and Partnership Program with WOL and Chronicle. Actually, offer our service. If somebody doesn't have a truck to take them, we'll take them out to them for the Pride Day, so.
Okay.
Right, Keith?
We will, we will make it happen, Commissioner. We'll make it happen.
Customer service.
That's right, with a smile.
Ted has a hitch on the back of his-
Yeah, right.
I can throw it on my expedition if somebody needs it, without a doubt.
Yeah, we'll roll through there and we'll get it going. So, all right. Any other questions?
No.
Good job, Brandy.
Thank you.
Thank you.
The next is Stepping Up Initiative and Proclaim the Day, Stepping Up Day of Action.
Right, so I continually talk about stepping up at my meetings. When we have a meeting, I come in and I report on it. So, this is going to give you a better idea what stepping up is all about. So, I'm going to read the proclamation, then Melissa's going to do a PowerPoint presentation. And then, we have some CIT officers that did some training and also, we're nominated for CIT of the Year. And we have one of those here and she's here today, so I'm glad you're here. So, I'm going to read the proclamation. "In the matter of proclaiming May 16, 2018, as Stepping Up Day of Action to reduce the number of people with mental illness in jails. Whereas counties routinely provide treatment services to an estimated 2 million people with serious mental illnesses booked into jail each year. And whereas Lorain County and all counties take pride in their responsibility to protect and enhance the health, welfare, and safety of their residents in efficient and cost-effective ways. And whereas the Lorain County Stepping Up Initiative is a growing body of 45 community members, is actively developing countywide process improvements to lower the number of severely mentally ill in Lorain County Jail. Through its focus of addressing the mentally ill in the criminal justice system, Lorain County Stepping Up provides a consistent platform for active discussion, joint planning, information sharing, and education across the diverse membership. The evolution of such actions will contribute to target judicial practices for mentally ill, improve responses by trained law enforcement, shorter jail stays for mentally ill offenders primarily incarcerated as a result of their illness, and a stronger mental health crisis system. And whereas the National Association of Counties, the Council of State Governments, Justice Center, and the American Psychiatric Association Foundation started stepping up to encourage public, private, and nonprofit partners to reduce the number of people with mental illness in jails. And whereas Lorain County joined Stepping Up on the 30th of April, March 2016, to show its commitment to working on this issue locally. And whereas Stepping Up is hosting a Day of Action on May 16th for counties to hold an event or participate in local activities to share with constituents the process they have made in addressing the prevalence of people who have mental illness in their jails and raise public awareness and understanding of the important issue and emphasize their commitment to- to create data-driven system-level changes to, to policy and practice to achieve their stepping up goals. Now therefore, let it be resolved that the Lorain County Board of Commissioners do hereby proclaim May sixteenth, two thousand eighteen as Lorain County Stepping Up Day of Action and encourage all county officials, employees, and residents to participate in or host associated activities or events. Signed, Lorain County Board of Commissioners, Ted Kayla, Matt Lundey, and Lori Kokowski. So that was kind of long, but very important. Um, unfortunately, people with mental illness, when they go to jail, they get worse, uh, as they stay there. Um, this is also talks about when we first started this, uh, people with co-occurring addiction issues too. And those people actually get better while they're in jail because they are not able to, uh, do the drugs that they were doing that got them there in the first place. So, um, if Melissa, if you would come up and start your presentation, um, get, get into the nitty-gritty of what stepping up is all about.
I can do that. Okay, thank you for allowing us to be here today. My name is, uh, Melissa Myers Fisher, and I'm a project specialist at the Lorain County Sheriff's Office. And part of my role there, um, is also to coordinate stepping up. And today I want to talk to you about what stepping up is and some of the accomplishments that, um, we've made in the past year since we became a stepping up county. And just so you know, um, we actually have four hundred and thirty-seven counties across the United States that are celebrating today as the day of action. And, um, so I have a PowerPoint presentation that I want to show you that'll give you, uh, a sense of why we're here and what we're discussing, and then we'll move into, um, our C I T award presentation, so. So today is May sixteenth, uh, two thousand eighteen, and today is stepping up day of action. And, um, I'll start out with a little video reel that, um, actually stepping up started and was launched in two thousand fifteen in conjunction with a NACO conference.
The United States has five percent of the world's population, but we have twenty-five percent of the world's prison population. Uh, and in large part, that's because we have essentially criminalized mental illness.
What we did was we only moved people out of the old asylums and into the new asylums, our jails and prisons. The real indictment in our country is on us. That's where the real indictment, that we in this brilliant country of ours has not figured out a better way to treat and help those with mental illness and addiction other than to lock them up.
Can we spend seventy billion dollars a year on our jail systems? Seventy billion dollars a year. And if you think about it, the prison system houses about two to three million inmates a year. We house over eleven million inmates who come through our county jails every year. That's the burden that's placed on local government.
And this battle won't be won in individual counties. We need a national movement to reduce these numbers and to change the way we treat people who have mental illnesses. Stepping up provides the vehicle for counties to share information and to share our experiences with each other so that we can learn from each other's successes and also replicate strategies that have already been proven to work.
Okay, this video goes on for like another four or five minutes, but you can see the passion in some of our legislators nationally that talk about stepping up and the importance that we, um, have for this initiative. Stepping up, um, has a framework behind it that was developed. And there's, uh, basically key, set, six key questions that, uh, we ask as leaders for our community. Is our, and number one is probably one of the more important, is our leadership committed? And I will say, from the state level, uh, we have retired Justice Stratton, who's, you know, is so active in this initiative across the state. And then locally, um, Commissioner Kokowski, um, I don't think you've missed a meeting. So I just want to, uh, thank you for your commitment to that. And then actually the room is full of, uh, we have about forty-seven members that, um, maybe are not always in attendance at our monthly stepping up meetings, but, um, so if you're a stepping up meeting member, can you raise your hand just to give, uh, evidence of who we have here today, um, in attendance? So we, we do have membership from all aspects of the criminal justice system, uh, definitely the common pleas court and municipal court systems, um, as well as probation. We have, uh, community representation. We have NAMI at the table. Um, we also have, uh, our, one of our main partners, which is Lorain County Board of Mental Health. Um, Dr. Kern and her staff are instrumental in, um, allowing us to meet at their annual events center on a monthly basis and providing, uh, everyone a nice lunch also. So, um, so at the, at the county level, um, we look at some of these key questions. Uh, do we have baseline data? Do we conduct timely screening and assessments? Um, we're still digging into our data because as you know, data is very important to help inform decisions that need to be made. Um, and there's a lot of work going on behind the scenes. People like, what do you do at the, at the jail? Well, a lot, a lot of what I'm doing at the jail is what we consider be- behind the scenes work. So, um, there are some few unknowns yet as far as the data collection, but I'll talk about that in a minute. Um, we did go through a sequential mapping process as a county, and that did allow us to conduct with a, um, what we understand as a comprehensive process analysis and inventory of services. And then, uh, have we prioritized policy practice and funding improvements? And, um, as you know, funding's key for any type of initiative. And so a lot of things that are happening, um, outside in the community with the mental health system, um, it may not be happening because of, um, necessarily because of stepping up. But stepping up, uh, what it does, it gives a, a platform for a lot of conversation to ta- and happen. And what, what the video talked about also is the sharing of information. And then do we track progress? And so one of the first things that we did is develop a, a dashboard that shows a lot of jail statistics to help us figure out what exactly is happening, uh, with the mental health, um, at the jail. So ultimately reducing the number of people with mental illnesses booked into the jail, uh, increased connections to treatment, reduce the length of time spent in jail, and reduce recidivism. And so th- those four, um, are kind of like our goals of, of, as part of stepping up.
Each year in the United States, two million people with serious mental illnesses are admitted to jails. Many of whom also have drug and alcohol problems. In fact, across the nation, more individuals with mental illnesses are in jails than psychiatric hospitals. People dealing with this problem, if you didn't agree, the current approach doesn't improve public safety. It stresses already strained budgets, and people who could be helped are suffering. Some counties and communities aren't waiting for help. They're training criminal justice professionals to identify mental illness and respond appropriately. They're designing programs that redirect individuals to treatment. And if those individuals are already at jail, connecting them to services to help break the cycle of re-arrests. The stepping up initiative nurtures these efforts to create meaningful change across the nation. It unites state and local leaders, criminal justice and behavioral health professionals, and people living with mental illnesses behave in calm and low to safely keep individuals with mental illnesses out of jail and on the path to recovery. Join the initiative today and learn how you can make a difference.
Definitely there's an identified need for system-level change, and that's, uh, that's what stepping up is about. Is to help better link people to treatment and services while improving public safety in fiscally responsible and effective ways. And I wanted just to take a few minutes to look at some of our basic jail statistics, just to give you an idea. It costs sixty-nine dollars per day to house an inmate in the county jail. It is anticipated that this rate is higher for inmates who are severely mentally ill as they require additional staff resources, medication, and housing requirements. Uh, this is a return to jail rate, which is, uh, a rate at which an inmate returns to jail during a twelve-month period, which is a little bit different from recidivism. But our return to jail rate is nineteen percent. So I'd say about one in five, uh, persons have more than one jail stay. And it is also anticipated, research will suggest that this is higher for the mentally ill population. The average length of stay is thirteen days at our local jail. And then seventy-five percent of the jail population is incarcerated less than thirty days. And again, this is anticipated that this is higher for the severe mentally ill. And that kind of goes towards, uh, the churning that we experience at the county jail. Some jails will say that they turn over their, like, ninety percent of their population within a three to four-month period, so. On average, fifty percent of the inmate population does not have insurance, and another forty-seven pers- percent reports having Medicaid coverage. And that, again, that speaks to, uh, connection to treatment and what's important for, uh, particularly in our state for Medicaid expansion. Um, about fifty percent of inmates reporting to be homeless at the time of booking. And also those inmates, um, report mental illness. On average, sixty-three percent are receiving psychotropic medications on a daily basis. And of the approximately seven hundred inmates booked monthly, eight percent report a psychiatric disorder, and another five per, five percent re- report previous suicide attempts. And those are self-reports. So some of the work that's being, uh, performed and conducted by our various committees on stepping up, um, there is a, a committee that's looking at permanent supportive housing. And we are actually receiving, um, consultation through, uh, consulting firm called Council of State Governments. Another committee is looking at designing a live binder. And that's a digital online binder, um, that helps organize and share current information. And then they'll be doing some cross-system training. Again, data is pretty key to this, uh, initiative. And so, um, there's several things going on at once is, uh, looking at data. We're looking at, um, homeless inmates and the frequency within the mental health system, some cross-analysis there. Uh, we're looking at, uh, we have a volunteer that's working with the sheriff's office that's, uh, doing an analysis right now. Um, she should be done with that next month, that's looking at law enforcement response to psychiatric situations. We also have revised our jail intake questionnaire to include a homeless question and some other, uh, refining of some mental health questions. And then we also conducted a judge's survey and, uh, a follow-up training in partnership with, uh, Cuyahoga County. And then, um, as far as the developing law enforcement and community health, mental health practices, um, there's a lot of things going on, uh, in the mental health world. And I know Dr. Kern could probably talk for a while on everything that she has going on at the mental health board, but, um, there is a focus on building, uh, a stronger mental health crisis continuum. And then, uh, in the judicial world, um, we do have some possible, uh, discussions about a mental health specialty docket. Um, the probate court just announced an assisted outpatient treatment, and that, uh, uh, press res- press release went out yesterday. And then, um, there's conversation about a pre-sensing program for the S M I population, and then just a stronger data sharing between the courts and the jail. And then finally, um, we do have a detox, um, a- as you know, um, with that, with the detox work that's going on within the county, um, stepping up is about supporting that work. Okay, um, right now, I guess we'll go into our C I T award. And, um, Holly, I don't know, Holly, if you want to say something, uh, on behalf of C I T, but we do have, uh, the trainers here, uh, for the Crisis Intervention Team Training.
I just want to appreciate everybody coming out for the C I T of the year and all the nomination, uh, nominees coming out as well. So I really appreciate you being here. You've been a great asset to this community, and our C I T program continues to grow and become stronger as we move forward. And I appreciate everybody's help in that endeavor.
You want to talk about how many? Five?
We received five nominations this year for our C I T officer of the year.
You'll be on the camera. They'll see you out there.
Oh, okay. Sorry, I hate to have my back to people, so I'm sorry about that.
Sorry about that.
So we received five nominations for the C I T Officer of the Year, were, um, this year. So that was more than we actually have ever received. We've been doing the C I T, um, Officer of the Year. This is our third year, so it's something new that we tried. Um, so the, now the departments are really buying into that and are excited about that, so I'm excited as well. So we wanted to recognize all the nominees. So if I could have Cassandra Spears come up for me? Thank you so much. I appreciate it.
Well, Holly, uh, can we get pictures of you?
Sure.
Lieutenant Deana Baker. Lieutenant Baker's also been phenomenal in our data initiative for stepping up as well, and I cannot thank you enough.
She's one that doesn't miss a meeting either.
William Witt. Elyria Police Department. William's also getting ready to retire, so congratulations. Donald Cantwell with the Sheriff's Department. Donald worked in the specialty unit at the county jail with the mental health inmates. And Margaret speaks very highly of you. Thank you for all your work. Thank you. And for the Officer of the Year, Bridget Novak is with the probation department. As you probably have saw in the newspaper not too long ago, Bridget has started her own initiative with actually reaching out to people, um, that have mental health problems that are on the probation docket. Um, and she will actually go out during well visits as well to get to know the people on her pace load. And so she's been phenomenal in that. And taking on it, her own initiatives has been awesome. So for Bridget. Thank you very much.
Okay. Did you want everybody to come up and get a picture?
Yeah, we'd love that.
You guys all want to come up front?
If everyone that received an award could come up, please?
Okay, great.
Okay.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Sure.
Do whatever you like.
Okay. Um, Melissa, just, I, I just really wanted you to elaborate a little bit more on the important role that the Medicaid expansion, uh, plays with helping these individuals. Uh, very alarmed by the messaging that I'm seeing out there this year about getting rid of the Medicaid expansion. I think it's really important for the community to hear that that's a, that's a horrible idea.
Yeah.
Um, and that it's playing a very important role addressing the mental health and addiction, uh, treatment.
Yeah, I will say that, um, I was kind of surprised at the number of, um, inmates who report not having any form of insurance and those reporting with a high number of Medicaid. But definitely for treatment services, Medicaid is important. Uh, as you know or may not know, uh, we cannot bill Medicaid while an inmate is incarcerated. And so, um, for us to be able to get them connected to Medicaid for those individuals that are, or inmates that are not connected to, um, any form of health insurance, Medicaid is a great option for them. And it, and I, I don't know, you know, the mental health system can probably speak better than I on the impact of not having that as a safety net in our community and having, uh, Medicaid expansion help cover the cost of treatment for mental health and alcohol and drug.
Bridget, where, did you want to say anything? I know you spoke at our stepping up meeting before, and you're a very good, dynamic speaker and have a lot of passion for what you do. Did you want to say anything about?
Uh, sure.
Come on up.
Sure. I don't have anything prepared, but I think I can.
I know you can.
I was really flattered and surprised to be nominated for, thank you, Lieutenant Baker, uh, C I T Officer of the Year. Uh, but I share this award with Cassie Spears and Deana Baker, my two partners in C I T outreach. Um, and I want to thank our chief, uh, Beth Haldrich. I want to thank my supervisors that are here today, Abby Spooner and Kristen Moishar. They all provide great leadership for me. I'm very thankful to be a Lorain County probation officer. Um, we're changing the way we do things, and it's working, and, uh, I'm excited to be a part of it. And, uh, I just want to thank everybody. I'm flattered and, and I appreciate it very much.
You want to say, you go out to, into the community and talk to some of these people that are struggling with mental health issues, and you go with a team, correct?
We do.
And how's, tell us how that works.
We do, we go, we meet with folks who have mental illness, and, uh, we make sure that they're linked up to, uh, you know, make sure they have their medications, you know, their, their prescriptions filled. We make sure they're linked up with their doctors and their therapists. If they need to get ahold of a family member, we'll call a family member. Uh, we just try to make sure that we let them know that we're a safety net there for them, and, uh, and that, you know, we're there to help them. We're in the business, I think, of recreating relationships between law enforcement and people who have had negative experiences due to their mental illness. So we're trying to establish new relationships and new ways of dealing with people, and I am very happy to say it's working, so.
It used to be they saw you and they thought they were in trouble. Now they see you and they know that you care about them.
Yeah, they welcome us into their homes now. Their families are happy to see us. They're happy to see us, and we're proud of that.
Yeah, and I'm proud of you guys because you do a great job.
Thank you very much.
Judge Cook, any comments in regards? I see you're joining us this morning.
You have to come up here, though. See, Commissioner Kallo put you on the spot.
You've got to recognize the judge. He came, so.
Thank you. I'll be very brief. This award is well-earned. I have been involved in Stepping Up for the Common Pleas Court since it started, and it's an amazing program administered by amazing people. And the Common Pleas Court is doing everything it can to support this initiative. We are seriously looking at a mental health court docket, which would be similar to the Veterans Court and the Recovery Court dockets, to assist those with serious mental health illness when they're actually in the common police system. And we're partnering with the municipal courts so that we can have one mental health court for the whole county that will deal with all individuals in the court system. Judge Jim Raldi and I are sort of spearheading that, and I hope we have something positive to report that is concurrent with Stepping Up, and hopefully we'll have some information shortly for you. But congratulations to the recipients. Bridget, amazing. All of the folks here do a great job, and thank you very much.
Thank you. Judge Bill Encini from Avon, Avon Lake, he also comes to our Stepping Up meetings, and he's been very active, so. Just a great group of people trying to make a difference in the mental health community, so thank you all.
You know, Commissioner, there's about 25,000 prisoners that are released into Ohio, maybe 26,000 every year into the communities, and about 55% of them are back in prison in three years because there's not enough supports and enough resources out there. And it costs $30,000 a year to house a prisoner at the state level, give or take a few dollars.
What did you say about the, being able to put them all in college for a year or something?
Well, once years ago, we were spending so much on our jail, and I shouldn't say so much, it cost to operate. So I don't want to be, they do a great job out there, so I don't want to be damaging to that. But if we put all that money into education, they can all have free tuition for college. That's, and we, our costs are substantially lower here than at the state, but the state's spending $30,000 on a prisoner, but yet the resource they provide to us for reentry programs and services to help folks regain their footing is not very much at all.
Abysmal at best.
Well, I was going to, trying to be a little nicer, but they will pay $30,000 to house them in a prison, but how much do they give us to help get locally with them? It's not a good balance of the dollars.
The only good news I saw here today, I questioned Melissa on that when she said it's $69 a day to house a prisoner at our jail. It used to be like $80 to $90 a day, so the cost of that's gone down. Either that or we just have a lot more inmates that is driving the cost down, so I don't know, but $69 is still a lot of money. Thank you all for attending. Appreciate what you do.
Madam Clerk?
Mr. Renes.
Good to see you back, Melissa. It's been a while. I hope everything's going well with the sheriff for you. We've had a busy morning. I'll yield the counsel and just remind you of the executive session issues I'd like to discuss. Thank you.
Mr. Renes.
I have another bevy. I have four matters pending or imminent litigation for discussion in executive session.
I know, bevy means a lot.
Just another week at the office, right?
Mr. Sheriff's Report.
Well, Thursday, I attended my Stepping Up meeting. Now you all know what I do there when I go. So, and then Friday, I attended the Opie to Action team meeting. And yesterday, the state of this village, Sheffield Village, the heart of Lorraine County, Mayor Hunter had over at Quaker Steak early yesterday morning, so he knows his village inside and out and does a great job. And then, we did put out a press release today for Keep Ohio Beautiful Award. The Sol waste management district and the commissioners are pleased to announce that Main Street has been awarded a paint grant from Keep Ohio Beautiful. Each year, Keep Ohio Beautiful partners with Sherwin-Williams, and the grant provides community groups with paint and painting supplies to transform buildings in need of repair. So there'll be volunteers. We'll get painting supplies, up to 40 gallons of paint to restore the exterior of the old Cheese Building in Wellington, and it's great to see the pride in their community. And if you have any questions or want to contact anybody in the Sol Waste Management District, you can call 329-5442.
I was going to say, paint's not cheap anymore. Paint's expensive.
It is very expensive, but, end of my report.
Okay, great. Yeah, busy week. On Thursday evening, I attended Lorraine Historical Society Annual Dinner, packed house at DeLuca's, and Dick Desage was the speaker from Equity Trust. He had kind words to say about the Board of Commissioners, always reappointing him to the Board of the College and the importance of education and working hard. Dick did a great job, and again, congratulations to the Board at the Historical Society. Friday morning, busy, had three meetings at Noaka that day. We started off at 8:30 in the morning with our audit with the state of Ohio auditors. We had a clean audit, a couple suggestions, but we're such small staff, some double-checking behind that, we had a clean audit. We also discussed, in our governance committee, the new Noaka dues discussion. There hasn't been an increase in dues in 11 years, so we're talking about an increase in dues to get some things done. And then, of course, we had our executive board moving everything to the Board for next month's general board meeting for approval. Also, we kicked off our Leadership and Partnership Program with WOLs, I explained earlier. So we'll be out in the community and recording, discussing things happening in the county. People don't always know what the Board of Commissioners do. First talk was about Pride Day and the Keep America Beautiful trailers that are available for the community. And then, again, congratulations to Mayor Hunter. His Sheffield Village Business Meeting went off great, a lot of attendance, people interested. Nice job, Mayor Hunter.
It was live streaming, did you know?
No, I didn't know that.
Yeah, they were live streaming. The Journal, I think, did.
Oh, did they? That's why Daryl was sitting up front?
Yeah.
Okay, all right then. End of my report.
Just want to send out a congratulations, Lorraine County Chamber. They held their economic summit on Friday, wasn't able to attend, but I understand it was a very informative and great event. Also, congratulations Avon Lake Garden Club on their Mother's Day plant sale. And once again, Happy Mother's Day to all the mothers. Can't think of a tougher job than being a mom, so. Once a mom, always a mom, right? And also, congratulations Mayor Hunter, Sheffield Village, on the Business Council Breakfast, always very informative and very well-attended. And that completes my report.
Next Wednesday at 8:30, we'll have our Transportation Improvement District meeting, Board Correspondents.
Will the reading be waived?
A second.
Discussion. Mr. Kallo.
Aye.
Mr. Lundey.
Aye.
Ms. Kokowski.
Aye.
Public comment?
Anyone wishing to address the Board this morning?
No.
Seeing none, I'll make a motion, move an executive session as outlined by the county administrator and the bevy of litigation with the assistant county prosecutor.
Yeah, I think I want to second that motion, yes.
Mr. Kallo.
Aye.
Mr. Lundey.
Aye.
Ms. Kokowski.
Aye.
Thank you, everyone.
This has been a broadcast of the recent Lorraine County Commissioner's General Meeting. Unless otherwise announced, meetings are held Wednesday morning at the Administration Building, 226 Middle Avenue, fourth floor downtown Elyria. These are public meetings, and you are invited to attend. Agendas are posted prior to the meeting at www.lorainecounty.us. Click on Departments to see the Commissioner's page, and click on View Agenda for a printable copy of the agenda.